Good evening, I'm calling the Monday, October 23rd, 2017 Planning Commission Meeting to Order. Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Legions?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, alright, the first item on the agenda this evening is the approval of tonight's agenda. Do I have any requests for changes? Entertain a motion to approve?
Some move.
You have a second?
Second.
Alright, all those in favor approving the agenda?
Aye.
Alright, moving on, approval minutes from the last Planning Commission meeting held on Monday, October 9th, 2017. Do I have any requests for edits or any omissions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve?
Some move.
You have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, the minutes are approved. Moving on, we have next up a public hearing. This is a continued public hearing from September 11th, 2017. It's a code amendment, self-storage facilities. This is a request to amend City Code, Chapter 11, related to self-storage facilities. Julie, will you be speaking to this again?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, members of the commission, as stated, this is a continued public hearing. The discussion originated on September 11th when staff brought forward a code amendment requesting changes to the zoning ordinance that would define self-storage facilities, as well as list them as a permitted use in the I General District. At that meeting, the commission had a robust discussion and had some questions. So staff went back and has pulled together some of the information related to the topics that the commission was focusing on. So, as you'll see in your staff report, there is some additional information provided with regard to the other industrial zoning districts within the city. The city has three industrial zoning districts, I General, I 2, and I 5. And within your packet, there is a map of each of those zoning districts independently illustrating the location, area, size of parcels that are zoned, of those respectful zoning, respective, excuse me, zoning districts. So that you can have a graphic that identifies where those are at. So as you can see in the table in your staff report, within the city, there's about 57 acres zoned I General, 373 zoned I 5, and approximately 900 acres zoned I 2. A fourth graphic that's provided within your packet identifies those properties that are zoned commercial districts. In this case, staff did not split those out by individual zoning districts, rather, we provided all of those that are commercial, excluding Town Center and TOD. And in that category, there's roughly 645 acres of commercial zone property. That includes commercial regional services, neighborhood commercial, community commercial, and highway commercial. The city also took a look at and provided additional information with regard to the long-term plans for the industrial areas, since that's where we're focusing the discussion on with regard to this as a potential use. So as you're well aware, the comp plan, the Golden Triangle Study, all propose land uses looking forward, anticipating redevelopment in that area, area associated largely with LRT coming into that area, as well as continuing to look at that area for industrial office uses with the potential for higher intensity office and residential uses. Self-storage facilities, generally speaking, are a low-intensity use. In addition, the employment factors that are associated with those are, on average, about three employees per facility. So that information was shared in your packet as well. The city currently has, as we talked about last time, four self-storage facilities within our boundaries. There's approximately 2,000 units, or storage units, within those four facilities. And that those areas are occupying about roughly 20 acres within the city. There was also discussion last time regarding architectural standards, and if that was a way, an alternative way, to regulate self-storage facilities. So staff did a little additional research with regard to other metro-area communities to understand how those communities not only address architectural standards, but in what zoning districts they allow self-storage facilities, and if they are a permitted use by right or a use that requires additional review through a conditional use permit, because that was a specific issue that the commission brought forward. So as you can see in your memo, all of the cities that were contacted apply the same architectural standards to mini-storage or self-storage facilities as they would any other use within that zoning district. So said another way, the city does not have architectural standards for general uses and then a separate and distinct set of architectural standards for self-storage facilities. As you can see also in the table, the use of self-storage facilities tends to be a permitted use in industrial districts. Woodbury allows them as a conditional use permit in the business campus district. Now, as you know, different cities have different names for their zoning district. That tends to be more of an industrial office type of zoning district in that particular community. And Chan-Hassan allows them as a conditional use permit in business districts, business fringe districts, to be specific. So again, more of that commercial light industrial type of use. All of the other communities allow them as a permitted use in the industrial districts. So, because a few of the communities allow them as conditional use permits, I wanted to kind of expand on that a little bit for the commission's background. The city has not historically used conditional use permits as other communities do. Rather, the city has used planned unit developments as a way to regulate uses that might need a little bit of specificity or particular conditions applied to those. As we'll talk about later on this evening, the city does have some provisions in its ordinance for conditional use permits, but those are limited at this time to historical properties. And as I noted, the city will be talking about adding telecommunications or small cell sites as another conditional use permit due to a recent change in state law. But just to kind of close that loop for you with regard to conditional use permits. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. Staff is continuing to recommend approval of the amendment as it was presented to you at your September 11th meeting. And it's my hope that this information answers some of the questions that you had at that meeting, but I'm happy to answer any other questions that you might have.
Great, thank you. Any initial questions from the members?
Julie, can I just ask you a question here? I'm looking at the letter from Mr. Hellman here, and it did raise an interesting point, which I am reflecting upon here. The part in the letter, it says, "The plight of the existing four facilities." And the part that has me a little concerned, being what my background is, I have some experience with this, is in a non-conforming mode, while I do agree with, you know, with the concept of what we're doing as such, I get a little concerned when it would affect their ability to refinance those properties with it being called non-conforming. He also points out, as far as expanding, well, where they're sitting as far as expanding is not something I'm really thinking in terms of. I'm more concerned, I think, of some reflection on refinancing the property. Because everyone should have their right to it, and I know that sometimes non-conforming can be a roadblock. Just a little thought about that.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, as Commissioner Freiberg noted, the city did receive a letter from one of the current property owners of one of the four existing mini-storage facilities in town. And if the code amendment, as it's presented, were to be approved, yes, those four uses would become non-conforming. Both state law and the city's zoning ordinance regulate non-conforming uses and allow them to be, to continue to operate in the fashion in which they do, as well as they can maintain, repair, replace, but they cannot expand their use. So in looking at those four sites, those sites are largely maxed out, there's not a lot of future expansion opportunity. With regard to Commissioner Freiberg's specific question about refinancing, in those situations, what will happen is the financial institution that is considering the refinance will reach out to the city and ask for a zoning letter. And the city will issue a zoning letter explaining, this is what the property's zoned, this is what the comp plan guides it for, laying out what the requirements are or regulations are related to non-conformities, and pass that on as a part of that refinancing effort. So it's fairly routine for the city to issue those zoning verification letters, not only for non-conforming uses, but a lot of other uses as properties change hands.
Julie, do you also see that too, where it comes to insurability? Because that's the other question he has, is being able to insure those properties. Is the city getting involved in that before too, if there's ever a question?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, it has been my experience as well that there are times when the city is asked to issue a zoning letter to insurance companies as well as financial institutions.
Thank you.
Just to follow up on that, we discussed last time, they are able to sell it or they're not able to sell it? The business has this?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, nothing about a non-conforming use limits the ability to have a transaction or property to change hands.
And if they wanted to expand, they could come for a waiver request?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, if they wanted to expand, it's very likely they would come in and talk to city staff, and we would educate with regard to the non-conforming use. However, if they chose to file an application requesting expansion of that use, certainly the city would process that application and bring it forward.
Commissioner, will you?
Julie, the existing facilities, I'm trying to recollect from the map. Those existing facilities, where are they currently, what area of the zone are they in currently?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, three of them are within properties that are zoned I 2. One is on property that is zoned commercial regional services, and that property is right off of Valley View Road.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Farr.
Can I tag on to Commissioner Freiberg's question about the refinancing and insurance? Are those, are the costs of those instruments tied to a non-conforming use? In other words, would it be more expensive to insure or refinance based on the fact that it's zoned as a non-conforming use?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, that I can't answer specifically because the city doesn't get involved in that end of things.
Okay. Just trying to figure out what kind of hardship the author was talking about.
And for the, I'm not sure how many people were here last meeting, with Commissioner Farr and Commissioner Freiberg. Were you here at the initial discussion?
Not for this.
Well, one thing that Julie mentioned was talking about separate built architectural standards for self-storage units, but I don't know if we talked about that. I thought we thought that it would be baked into, if you were in commercial, it would be a higher architectural standard, as opposed to industrial, so it would naturally kind of fare it out. The land would probably cost more, you'd probably spend more in architectural standards. I think that was the...
I agree, yep. I believe our conversation, in the well-spirited nature of it, was regarding, trying to define the use in the customer base that uses this type of facility. I think many of us at that meeting thought that it was more of a commercial use than an industrial use. Industrial parks, campuses generally shut down at 5:00 weekdays and aren't open for business, and therefore, it's a very quiet neighborhood after hours, evenings, and all weekend. Whereas, this type of business is probably more popular after hours and weekends because of what people do to move in and out of their storage facilities. And as we all thought about our sons and daughters possibly going somewhere at night, at dark on the weekend, in a more deserted place like an industrial park, we thought from a public safety standpoint, gee, is this the best place to push that type of business? Or should it remain in a more of a business-like, well-populated area, which is well-lit and has a lot of cars going back and forth? So, I think there were two sides to the coin. I like staff's highest and best use argument that they have in their staff report, and I agree with that. But I'm really torn as to why we're pushing a use that has a lot of customers that would use it after hours into a part of the city that is not well-populated and, from a public safety standpoint, might be compromised at times.
Discussion from anyone, or?
I could perhaps add one other perspective. I used to be a resident in Minneapolis when our family was much younger, when we had children. And in that instance, what I became familiar with was circumstances that arise in a family setting. So we're talking about residential kinds of things. Where an older household in the family is now going to be divided among the younger generation, if they're interested. And the point is that in two different instances, while we were living in Minneapolis, we became kind of the repository, not at our home, but at a storage facility for belongings of people who lived elsewhere, I mean, at some distance. But that people here in the nearer location to Minnesota were interested in having. And the reason we did it was because of where there was a storage facility. And it was not in, it was, I don't know for sure exactly how it was zoned. It was on Hiawatha Avenue. That is a very industrial area. However, the area where it was, was being redeveloped with apartments and other things happening along the light rail route. That it was being, it wasn't even yet developed, it was coming, and things were changing over there. But more importantly, there was a lot of activity. In other words, I was in the situation of trying to figure out how to manage getting things in and out of it and just kind of dealing with that whole thing. But my point still is what you have just raised, which is, the activity isn't necessarily just, you know, an eight to five or, you know, daytime type of thing. I mean, it's very, it has a lot of variety, at least that's what I noticed when I was doing it. And I had one other occasion when that also was the case, in Apple Valley, where I went to a self-storage facility that was, I would say it was more of an industrial zoned area for sure. But it did front on a main street. It wasn't off in the back. It was right out, you know, where there was a lot of activity. And I found it just easy to tell people that this was a good location for them to come and pick up things that they needed from us. But just was thinking of it just from that personal perspective of, you know, some of the things that you have mentioned now, Mr. Commissioner Freiberg and yourself, so.
Well, one thing that really comes up is that when you're looking at what we have for acres of commercial districts, 644 acres, that's really not very many acres. And if you're looking at the other three districts, you're looking at, what is it, roughly 1,328 acres. At highest and best use of that remaining 640 acres in commercial, I think is really important. I mean, I do really understand that.
Julie?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, just to circle back to some of the safety conversation that you've been having, I did want to point out, if it wasn't clear enough in the memo or in the attachment from the property owner, that the industry standard currently for constructing self-storage facilities is to have a safe access. So for instance, if I'm a consumer or a renter of one of those storage facilities, I have specific, whether it's a swipe key or a fob or something, to get into those areas where then I'm in the facility, I'm kind of locked in, if you will, doing what I need to do, unloading, loading, and then I have secure access in and out of the facility. So I just wanted to bring that to the discussion as well, if that helps you.
Yeah, I'd kind of think the, if the business couldn't keep people safe, they probably wouldn't rent there, right?
Right, right. And I was using that phrase more in context of a neighborhood environment of public safety rather than on the premises, but your point's well taken.
Going to.
I think that we had a conversation about how this whole industry is evolving. And it's evident, obviously, in our own city, where probably the most recent, one of the four facilities that we have is across the street from Home Depot, where they went with a multi-story brick and glass facility. And, you know, they're going to be reaching out to whatever market they're going to serve, of course. Eden Prairie is certainly, I'm going to use the word affluent community, and they're going to reach out and try and serve our market, in my opinion. They're going to be looking for well-lit, well-traveled sites. I'm not saying that we need more mini-storage, if we have four already. I don't know if the 2,000 units over our population of...
63,000.
63,000. I don't know if that's a good ratio, or if there's more demand for this product or not. But I just fear that if there is demand for it, these businesses probably wouldn't like to be pushed into the I Gen zoning district, what little of it we have remaining left. And I'm not sure if there's a middle ground compromise or anything. I looked at the maps, and the I 2 district looked generous. What do we have, like 800 acre, or?
97.
900 acres of it, right? Mostly in the Golden Triangle area, as staff pointed out. And, you know, it's probably worth just looking at that map, I will anyway. And, you know, I think that the Golden Triangle study that was done by staff years ago that they pointed out in the staff report was really important to help us guide the vision of our city, especially around the new light rail station. That said, boy, I see half to two-thirds of the sites within the Golden Triangle as I 2. And with the people and technology that we're going to be putting in there, am I right that two of our four mini-storage facilities are in the Golden Triangle already?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I would say that three of them are.
Three of them are in the Golden Triangle. Sorry, I missed that. So that area is pretty well-served already.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, sorry to interrupt, but you're correct too. I was misplacing where that third one was at. Two are in the GTA.
That's what I thought, thank you. So maybe that area is served already, but my point is that perhaps there's room for everybody to play in that sandbox. It's a really big sandbox there. And the I 5s are small and remote, and I'm not sure that would be the best place for them. My personal opinion.
Could you just restate that? You would like to see it expanded from I Gen to I 2 as well?
I think that would be worth discussion. And again, I was, if we had a conditional use permit vehicle in our zoning ordinance that we used with greater use, greater frequency, I would even entertain it as a conditional use permit in a commercial zone with the right attachments. But that's not what we're here to discuss tonight, as much as whether or not we like it, just relegated it in I Gen or not. I think that's too limiting, is my opinion. And I thought that maybe as somewhat of a compromise, maybe the I 2 district could be added to the I Gen district in terms of permitted use. Be interested to know what others have to say about that, or whether or not we want to talk about re-establishing a conditional use permit like other cities do on a more frequent basis.
Julie, did staff, how did staff arrive to the recommendation for I Gen? Or was there discussion about whether I 2 would be included, or I 5, or?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, as you can see from the graphics that were attached in your staff report, the I 2 and the I 5, primarily more the I 2, because there's a lot more properties owned I 2 than I 5, are in those areas where the city expects significant redevelopment and reinvestment in those properties. And as stated in the staff report, self-storage facilities tend to be a very low-intensity use. Sometimes, they tend to be more horizontal in nature, like some of the older versions of self-storage. Some of the newer versions tend to be more vertical in nature. But in either case, they tend to be certainly low-intensity with regard to employment and other features. For instance, you know, there's not a lot of pedestrian connections. It becomes kind of a gap, if you will, with those areas where you're looking at eyes on the street and design features that create more of a vibrant, active area, which is what the city's long-term vision for the Golden Triangle area is with regard to that redevelopment plan as that area ages and reinvestment is anticipated and continues to happen.
Seems we've had a lot of discussions, we were talking about LRT development, about having it mixed-use, higher foot traffic, higher, making that last walking mile, I forgot what they call it, around that mile walk around...
The last half-mile?
The last half-mile?
The half-mile or the last mile?
The last mile or half-mile, okay.
We talked about both.
So we talked a lot about that, we talked about higher density. So it does seem like this kind of fits along, that all those discussions we had about developing those, the TOD.
Chair? I would agree with a lot of what Commissioner Farr is talking about. He said a word that's near to my heart, which is markets. And I'll translate that to need. I don't think we can sit here today and have any strong sense of what the need is going to be for these facilities sitting here today. And by lumping them all into a relatively small box of what they can crawl out of, I think, in my opinion, is a little limiting, because we don't know what that need's going to be. So I'm perfectly comfortable right now investigating, expanding the role that these potential storage uses can play beyond just throwing them into an I Gen.
Would you prefer expanding it more I Gen, or looking, and I 5 and I 2 in commercial, or are you...
At this point, I don't, I mean, we talked about architecture, and if it wants to be a commercial, it already has to go through an architectural process. So whatever sort of aesthetics that we're concerned about will be taken care of in that regard. Again, at this point, I'm not comfortable in limiting the potential, either limited economic growth that they may be, but there still is a need, there may be a need. And if the market determines that there's a need, then why should we limit that commercial or industrial development of self-storage units to certain areas of the city? That, you know, we are a residential city with wanting more, but we do want more industrial. And if we have to just push all the storage into smaller and smaller boxes at the edges of the city as opposed to closer to where the need lies, then that's going to be disruptive to the people actually want to use it. They'll go somewhere else. They'll go to downtown Minneapolis, or they'll go somewhere else where the need can be achieved for whatever the purpose that the residential customer or the commercial customer seeks.
Well, if I could just interject something. One thing we should consider is that we have a finite amount of land. There's no doubt about it, we just have a finite amount, and it's getting to be smaller and smaller. And the biggest pressure we're going to be facing is going to be facing the city with affordable housing. I mean, we can't just blink our eyes at it. When that rail comes through, affordable housing is right at the foreground of Met Council, the whole deal. And we're way off where they expect us to be by the year 2020. If I'm not mistaken, it's about 1,234 units right now. If we limit too much of our land, you know, where we can't redevelop it, as far as vertically, whatever, our decisions are going to get tougher and tougher and tougher down the road. Only concern I have about that, you know. And that is really going to dictate a lot of where we're going in the next 20 years, is what we can do with affordable housing. It impacts everything.
Well, and nested within that idea would be that each vertical structure, which is going to provide not just market rate but affordable rate housing, would have its own self-storage facility within it. That we could, the city could require prospective developers to dig a little deeper foundation... That we could, the city could require prospective developers to dig a little deeper foundation and create that self-storage within that self-contained unit of housing. I don't like the idea. I agree with you. I think we have very precious little developer land left, and I'd hate to see the self-storage facility get in the way of the affordable housing development. So, that's, I agree with you.
Would you see affordable housing being built in the I-2 though, or I-5? Would that be an option?
I would, what I'm looking at is, I'm looking at that I-2 right now.
At the I-2?
I'm looking at 897 acres and where it's mostly located, up in the GTA area. I-Gen and I-5 is of lesser importance because we're still would be retaining some flexibility there.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Farr.
Just picking up on Commissioner De Sanctus's point, which I thought was particularly keen. The lower-income housing solutions and smaller units, lifestyle housing and other choices that our community will be building in the next decade and two, will be pressured to minimize things like storage for residents, just because of market pressures. I've seen that trend, and I think it'll continue. Absent of our zoning ordinance, having requirements for those types of amenities for residents, and I don't know how we could control that, because I think only the market can, I think the demand for this type of self-storage is going to go up rather than down or stagnant, especially as it relates to the ratio of residents to storage units, because more residents will be living in, other than single-family dwellings, 10, 20, 30 years from now. And those residents, therefore, I think, need those services, and they would want them closer to where they live. So, I agree wholeheartedly with that concept. I think it would be difficult to regulate how much storage space we should put into a residential development. That's going to get a lot of pushback from the applicants, although I would still like to see it. I think it would get a lot of pushback if we tried to regulate that. And so, this third-party solution of providing self-storage to those residents is probably going to be market-driven, and there's probably nothing we can do to stop that train.
I'd also think along that, a piece of land or something you want to buy right near a light rail station would be more expensive, right? I have to think that you, these are typically driven to low-cost land, right?
Should be.
Like warehouse land, right?
Mr. Chair members of the commission, if I could remind you, it is a public hearing, so the public hearing is still open yet.
Yes.
Anyone have any other comments before we go to the public? Or any other thoughts? This is a public hearing continued. If anyone would like to speak, four against this amendment, please step forward now. Seeing none, any further discussion?
Can we talk about our choices?
Sure.
Is there just, one, in blue, there's a motion to recommend approval.
Actually, I should vote to close the public hearing.
Yes.
Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second on that.
All those in favor to close the public hearing?
Aye.
Very close. Thanks.
Mr. Chair members of the commission, to answer Commissioner Farr's question with regard to alternatives, so in your staff report, there is the staff recommendation of approval of the text amendment as it was presented at your September 11th meeting. Certainly, it was, is within the latitude of the planning commission to recommend an alternative to the city council, if that's where your discussion leads you, to identify some other solution that the commission feels comfortable with recommending forward to the city council.
So, by way of process, if it was not approved, where does it go? Does it go to city council still?
Mr. Chair members of the commission, if the planning commission were to recommend denial, that recommendation would be carried forward to the city council, and they would have the opportunity to hear what staff had presented and what the planning commission's direction was. So, it would move forward to the council for their review and consideration.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I could ask one more question of staff that I believe was asked at our last meeting of you, so you can repeat the same answer, but if this went through and an applicant came to you and said, "I would like to develop self-storage in a commercial district," what would be the process that you would recommend to that applicant to get a project approved in a district that doesn't have self-storage as an approved use?
Mr. Chair members of the commission, one clarification first. The scenario you're presenting is one where the code amendment is approved as staff presented, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. In that instance, city staff receives an inquiry on a property that is zoned commercial. City staff would educate that self-storage facilities are not a permitted use in the commercial districts, but they are a permitted use in the I-General district. We'd educate as to where those properties are at, what the process would be if a proposal were to move forward. If the applicant, or potential applicant, excuse me, wanted to pursue that, that request would likely come in the form of a text amendment, just like you're discussing this evening, where the code would be amended, request would be to amend code to allow them in a commercial district.
So, it's not a variance? It's a text amendment to the zoning ordinance they'd have to pursue?
Mr. Chair members of the commission, that's correct. It is not a variance because that would be a use variance. Variances are utilized when code allows something, but they can't quite meet the standard. So, for instance, it allows a setback of 25 feet, but the property owner can't quite meet that. They can only meet 20. So, it first has to be allowed by code before you can go through the variance process.
I'm going to stick my toe in the water, then. In anticipation of a possible recommendation of denial, ought we come to either some consensus or a direction to staff as to what to do from here, if everybody feels like I do. I don't want to suggest that you do, but maybe the conversation we had was enough that I'm apt to, when asked, vote for denial and hope that they can find other districts or other vehicles to allow these in other districts.
So, are you simply denial, or do you want to make a recommendation? Are you proposing to make a recommendation to staff to find other?
Yeah, that's why I was unsure, and I'd like maybe some input from the rest of you also, because I'm not exactly sure if we opened it up to other zoning districts, then all of a sudden, we'd have to get further in-depth on which commercial districts, and we're not prepared to do that this evening. And it might be easier for us to dip into I-2 as an example, that we all said, "Oh, there's a lot of land over there on the Golden Triangle," and blah, blah, blah. And I think that would be low-hanging fruit, but I don't want to miss anything that staff's better judgment may provide a keen insight to.
Mr. Chair members of the commission, there's nothing that prevents the commission from making a recommendation to the city council that says, you know, planning commission recommends, the definition is okay, but the proposal to locate only in the I-general district is what is causing a little consternation. So, as an alternative, the commission could make a recommendation that says, "We support I-Gen and I-2," or "We support all industrial districts." So, that's something else for the planning commission to consider. I just want to make sure that you guys understand all of the alternatives you have before you this evening.
Sure. So, approval, flat-out denial?
Or approval with modifications.
Modifications for adding an industrial zone or two, or all commercial, so.
There's a few options there. So, when you said approval with modifications, did you mean we should, if we like the definition but we don't like the districts, would that be an approval or denial with comments?
Mr. Chair members of the commission, you have three options in front of you. The first is recommend approval consistent with staff's recommendation. The second is denial of everything. The third is an approval with modifications. So, say you prefer, as a commission, to say, "We think the I-General and the I-2 zones are the appropriate districts," or "We think all of the industrial districts are a preferred district." Whatever combination of zoning districts that are out there, that could be your recommendation to the city council as well. Does that help?
Yes, thank you.
Maybe take a temperature, what? Someone want to offer up what they're thinking?
I could go along with the I-Gen and the I-5, but I got a feeling others may think differently, but I just have this belief that the I-2 district with that land will come back to haunt us if we don't be, you know, approach it carefully.
So, you're more along lines of approval?
Yeah.
But adding I-Gen and I-5?
I-Gen and I-5.
You mean, it's already I-Gen, adding I-2 and I-5 is not the event?
I'm sorry, adding I-5 to.
Words in your mouth.
Commissioner De Sanctus, do you have...
No, let me, excuse me, let me clarify. I just, I want to clarify something. What I was saying was excluding I-2. Okay, if that's what you, if that's what...
That's, I understood approving, which would be I-Gen, but also adding I-5.
That's correct. Thank you.
And I would also weigh in that I would approve I-Gen and I-5 as well.
So, my preference would be I-Gen, I-5, and commercial.
And I think you persuaded me that the I-Gen and the I-5 is probably the most salient place to put our recommendation, given the various circumstances with the way housing is going to develop, at least in the next five, 10 years.
Well, my question, then, is, with respect to the commercial zoning districts, if a developer comes along, an applicant, wants to put a facility nested within the larger structure, does that fall within the purview of this ordinance, or is that a separate variance?
You mean, putting a self-stor...
In other words, if you want to extend it to a commercially-zoned area where there's future development, that the self-storage would be nested within the larger structure. So, it wouldn't be subject to the same architectural standards, it would simply be a second use within that residential area.
Mr. Chair members of the commission, can I take a stab?
Yes, please.
So, in the commercial districts, commercial regional services, neighborhood commercial, community commercial, highway commercial, residential uses are not a permitted use within those zoning districts. So, I would not envision an instance where we've got a multifamily apartment facility that has self-storage facilities nestled amongst it. Those districts only allow residential uses. If there's a PUD and there's a sizable amount of commercial that's already provided and the residential is kind of a secondary use, and in that case, any storage facilities for those tenants would again be a secondary use to the secondary use, if that doesn't get too confusing. So, hopefully that helps pull it all together.
Well, then, let me ask a stupid question. So, if we had a mixed-use facility, what gets determined whether it's residential or commercial?
Mr. Chair members of the commission, if we have a vertically-mixed-use project, then we take a look at the different zoning districts that we have that regulate those, whether it's a town center district or a TOD district. We would take a look at the comprehensive plan for that area. There may even be a special area study that talks about preferred land use alternatives, and we would work with that developer to identify which zoning district most closely fits the needs of that particular project.
So, in Commissioner De Sanctus's example of a mixed-use residential-commercial development that was majority commercial, then if we let this go forward or don't include commercial, then that storage facility that would be inside that mixed-use building would not be allowed?
Mr. Chair members of the commission, this definition before you this evening is intended to address that third-party self-storage facility that Commissioner Farr is talking about. It's not talking about if I'm a tenant within an apartment building and there's a unit downstairs for me to store my Christmas decorations in. That's not what this is about. That is a amenity provided within that residential facility for its tenants. It's not a third-party off-site type of facility. If I wasn't a resident in that building, that space would not be available to me.
Commissioner Villarreal, can you, I don't know if it's changed now, but can you just clarify again what...
Oh, sure. So, my preference would be I-Gen, I-2, I-5, and commercial.
So, denial, basically?
Well, my recommendation would be to have the self-storage facilities be applicable to the I-Gen, to I-2, I-5, and commercial.
Correct.
Denial would be, put the whole thing away.
Right.
And I'm not saying that.
So, just defining, but not limiting to any district, zoning district? No?
Mr. Chair members of the commission, I think what Commissioner Villarreal is saying is, his recommendation, it would be recommend approval, but rather than limiting it to solely the I-General district, that it would be an allowable use in all of the industrial districts as well as the commercial district. That is a different action from recommending denial.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Farr, what do you...
I agree with Commissioner Villarreal. I'm more open to multiple zoning district applications because of the evolution of the product, the demand, I think, our city and residents will have on those facilities to up their game for our market. I don't think we're going to be seeing a lot of the old-style, quote-unquote, "industrial" style self-storage facilities spring up anymore to be competitive. I think, I think we have to evolve with it.
I also think that, I don't know, I'd like to see the market dictate it, so. I don't know if we've had a tie before, Julie. What does that mean?
Mr. Chair members of the commission...
Can it ties?
Mr. Chair members of the commission, at this point, it seems it would be appropriate for a motion to be put on the table so that there could be a vote. If that motion doesn't get a majority, then that motion doesn't pass. So, the commission could try an alternative motion to see if that passes. In either case, we could still carry that message forward to the council, saying this is, this is what the planning commission's motion was, this was the conversation, here was the vote, or the count, if you will, and take it forward to them.
All right.
I'm ready, I'll make the motion. We'll start here. So, I would move to recommend approval, let me see, make sure I say this the right way. I move to recommend approval to amend city code, Chapter 11, related to self-storage facilities based on information including the staff reports dated September 6, 2017, and its attachments, and October 18, 2017, its attachments, with the additional recommendation to include self-storage in I-Gen, I-2, I-5, and commercial districts.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second that.
All right, I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Mr. Chair members of the commission, can we do a raising of hands so we, the record could be clear?
All those in favor say aye, please raise your hand.
Aye.
Commissioner Farr, Commissioner De Sanctus, Commissioner Piper, all those opposed, please raise your hand. Commissioner Higgins, Commissioner Freiberg, any abstentions? Did you, Commissioner De Sanctus, did you vote? Oh, I'm sorry, I missed, did you raise your hand? I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, I missed it. Okay. All right.
So, is it a 3-3 or a 4-2?
It's a 4-2.
It's a 4-2.
Okay.
The motion passes.
Yes.
All right. Moving on to the agenda, we have another public hearing this evening. Code amendment, conditional-use permits, request to amend city code, Chapter 11, related to conditional-use permits. Julie, we'll be speaking to... Julie, we'll be speaking to this one as well?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, members of the commission, in May of this past year, the state legislature adopted new state law relating to the citing of small wireless telecommunications facilities in public right-of-way. That law specifically added small cells within the definitions of the state statute, as well as called them out as a permitted use in residentially-zoned right-of-ways. The language did include one exception that allowed cities the opportunity to additionally regulate within those R1 zoning areas, and it, the language was very specific in allowing them to be regulated through a conditional use. So therefore, staff is before you this evening with an amendment to our zoning ordinance that would align zoning ordinance language with state statute language and provide small-cell facilities or telecommunications facilities in public right-of-way of residentially-zoned properties as a conditional use, and sets forth the process by which that would be handled. So before you this evening, there are four different sections within the zoning ordinance that include amendments. The first one is the definition section, so again, aligning the definitions so that they mirror one another, and everybody's talking about the same thing. The second is with regard to special requirements and site plan approval, so it would require site plan approval of these specific conditional use permits, so that they would go through planning commission and city council review. The third is the section of the zoning ordinance that specifically talks about towers and antennas. As you can imagine, there was some language in there dating probably back to 1996 with the first Telecom Act that was passed, and we needed to update that again to make sure that those, those align with the language used in state law. And then the last section is the existing conditional use permit section of the ordinance. As I mentioned in our previous conversation on our, on the item just before this, our zoning ordinance currently allows conditional use permits on historic properties and in the major center area. So we've got two changes to the conditional use permit section. One is to eliminate the conditional use permits in the major center area, and I'll talk about that in a minute. And the second is to allow that the small, small cell sites to be located within the right-of-way, and again, setting out that process. So back to the major center area conditional use permit, some time ago, before the major center area developed in, in the manner in which it is, there were specific properties that were identified within that major center area that were zoned rural or residential, and those properties were identified as potential future office areas, commercial areas, and in order to manage that transition, this language allowed for a conditional use permit process to be used to manage that interim use until final development occurred. Those properties have all been developed at this point, so having the conditional use permit process is no longer necessary as the, the development has already occurred. So staff's proposing to eliminate that. The other small change is with regard to existing conditional use permits. Current language talks about conditional use permits having a sunset. There has been case law that has been tried on this particular issue, and state law essentially requires that as long as the conditions of a conditional use permit continue to be met, that conditional use permit should remain in effect. So that language that we have that talks about three years or five years for an approval period should be replaced with, as long as the conditions are being met, and that change has been made in the draft language in front of you this evening. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have, and staff is recommending approval of the amendments as they're presented before you this evening.
Thank you, questions?
I just have one question. Have you, we heard from any of the small wireless providers?
Mr. Chair members of the commission, public work staff has received inquiries and has provided information with regard to our process for licensing and things, you know, along those lines. We have not received any specific requests at this time. There's been a bit of due diligence, if you will, that's, that's been occurring, but no specific applications yet.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Farr?
Yep. Can I ask a question about these types of facilities that we're regulating? We're not only regulating these small equipment buildings, but also towers associated with them, correct? And if I come to understand the industry pretty well, the buildings themselves are always carrier-specific, but the towers, can't they be shared towers with different carriers? Is the city doing everything we possibly can to encourage shared towers as opposed to single-carrier towers?
Mr. Chair members of the commission, yes, we are. The zoning ordinance would include language that talks about the city's preferences, colocation, and as special licensing agreements are required with the city, especially if it was located within the city's right-of-way, the city would certainly be encouraging the colocation rather than individual units being placed more often than if they could collocate.
So by example, if one particular carrier comes in with a request for a tower, what rights do we have to ensure that that carrier offers other carriers to use the tower?
Mr. Chair members of the commission, I believe that is something that staff would work with the potential applicant on through the licensing agreement in order to ensure that it is built with the capacity to, what's the word I'm looking for? To control or add or handle additional apparatus being attached to it.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Villarreal?
So I have a couple of questions, and maybe they can be eliminated right off the bat here. So we've removed the, the definition for telecommunicate, we've basically removed the references to telecommunications, mechanical equipment, or telecommunications services. Is that correct? Okay. The question that I have is by removal of the specificity of the purpose, is there a risk of expanding beyond telecommunications wireless services? And what I mean is, I can foresee Excel proposing to install advanced meters for its service territory, which are all wireless. And in order to make the wireless signal from the meter hop its way back up to the billing system, it's going to be using small wireless networks that either they may own or they may lease. So by removal of the words telecommunications and specifically talking about cell phones, you know, commercial purpose, specific commercial purposes related to cellphone use, without necessarily exempting those other public utility purposes, is there a risk of inadvertently grabbing additional authority that the state may, the city may or may not have? And I, and I'm building on that by looking at the definition of public utility structure, which says a structure or pole supporting wires, which I read to mean a physical wire, not, you know, coils and all that. Then, public infrastructure relates to muni services as well as infrastructure related to electric, gas, telephone, cable-vision utility lines, poles, and boxes. Again, I don't see the exemption for wireless. And then, there's somewhere else where there's another public utility in here. Basically, the gist is, if you have a utility like Excel or CenterPoint that provides electric or gas service, and they begin to make use of greater residential wireless equipment, is it sufficiently, is what proposed here sufficiently not covering them?
Mr. Chair members of the commission, as staff had that conversation with the city attorney, because it was staff's question as well, is if, if we're transitioning from the definition of telecom to wireless, is that catching, if you will, all of those uses that are out there? The city attorney, based on their, their research within their office and looking back to the provisions in Chapter 6, which were recently amended to address wireless definitions as well, it was their recommendation and belief that we were adequately protected in, in that situation, and that telecom is more of an antiquated term, if you will, and didn't necessarily address everything we wanted to, where wireless catches all of those definitions.
Right, and I think that is, I think that opinion is accurate, being more than a cursory understanding of the public utility, public committee, public utility commission's authority, I'm not entirely certain. My fear is that there's a gap, a regulatory gap here, and I don't know who's going to fill it. If we are inadvertently filling it, that makes it a little bit more difficult for the utility than if it was just left to the state.
And Mr. Chair members of the commission, with that concern being raised, city staff could certainly reach back to the city attorney's office and have that conversation between planning commission review and city council review, understanding that that is a concern of the, of the commission, if that's the direction in which you head.
And since it applies, terminology would apply every time it's used to make sure, like towers and antennas. There are electric towers and antennas, and if they have wireless equipment on there to satisfy their own purpose, we want to make sure that it's-
Understood.
-properly arms-length.
Understood.
Mr. Chairman? Julie, can I ask you a couple of questions about some wording? I'm on, let's see, page 40 of our packet, subdivision 3, B as in boy. That's the heading called Wireless Support Structures.
Can you go, Mr. Chair members of the commission, which section are you in again?
Subdivision 3. The subdivision 3 is entitled Additional Conditions, and paragraph B is entitled Wireless Support Structures. I'm about three pages from the end of your-
I'm, I'm with you.
Okay, thank you. I have a question about items, sub-items number one and number five. Subitem number one is, the wireless support structure shall be located at least 600 feet away from any existing wireless support structure or public utility structure. I'd like maybe just a little bit of a dialogue on what is a public utility structure. Hopefully, it's something more than just a manhole. And number five, the wireless support structure shall have no associated ground-mounted wireless mechanical equipment except an electrical meter, blah, blah, blah. I think it might be challenging for a building that throws off a lot of heat to maybe not have exterior condensers for cooling that 24/7, and I'm not sure we want the condensers up on the roof of this type of structure. That might be more challenging to screen year-round than more easily landscaped around if it was ground-mounted. So I might have you take another look at that HVAC limitation. But, so going back to that 600 feet of public utility structure, that seems to be a wide diameter.
Mr. Chair members of the commission, as you'll recall, based on the state language that was adopted with the recent change in, in statute, city would only have the authority to regulate these uses in a, for a conditional use permit in the R1 districts. So in any other industrial, commercial, or office, or multifamily zoning district, they would not have to go through this conditional use permit process. So, one, just orienting you back to, these are in the R1 zoning districts. So in the single-family residential neighborhoods, there's this additional level of review, if you will. So the intent with the first provision is to limit the amount of public utility facilities within the right-of-way, because these are single-family residential areas, and the 600 feet is intended to make sure that they're not grouped densely, if you will, within those areas, and, and make sure that aesthetic expectations are being met throughout the community. So, public utility structure, you know, I would have to go back to the zoning ordinance to clarify if there is a specific definition of that. And that is defined as a structure or pole supporting wires for communication or transmission of data or electricity. So it is not specifically referencing a manhole or other types of utilities. It is very specific to transmission of data or electricity.
Okay, I kind of figured it might include an electrical pole. So I think it would be tedious to map out where all of our electrical poles are in all of our residential districts in Eden Prairie, but trying to stay 600 feet away from an electrical pole, did I hear that right?
Mr. Chair members of the commission, if a utility or a provider were to come in and request a conditional use permit, that is information they would be required to provide as a part of that application. They would need to confirm or provide for the city's review and comment where are the, I want to get terminology right, public utility structures and wireless support structures with regard to their preferred location.
Okay, okay.
Commissioner Farr, are you satisfied with number five?
Uh, yes.
It sounds like it's in residential, so there wouldn't be a need, in your scenario without a building throwing off on heat, there wouldn't be a need for ground mechanical equipment? Are you satisfied with that answer?
Uh, no, I, I didn't hear that answer from staff.
We haven't gotten to that one yet.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Chair members of the commission, with regard to Commissioner Farr's question on number five, the wireless support structure shall have no associated ground-mounted wireless mechanical equipment except an electrical meter, if the meter is necessary for operation of a small wireless facility to be placed on the wireless support structure. So again, because we're talking about only in the residential districts, because we are trying to, through this process, manage aesthetics, manage the amount of facilities within the right-of-way, this would be a provision that if, if the provider wanted to locate there, there is an understanding that they would not be able to provide ground-mounted equipment there. There, they may, there, excuse me, tongue-tied, there may be alternative technologies that would need to be utilized in order to locate in those areas and meet these conditions.
I think that's putting a, somewhat of a burden on that applicant in terms of selecting an HVAC solution for 12-month seasonal cooling in the building. It's, it's not a game-breaker for me, but I, I think that's, if that's something that you've investigated and staff feels comfortable with that, I'm comfortable with that.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, just a point of clarification, the technology that, that some of you are referring to and the small-cell wireless facilities are different. So you may be thinking more of a large cell, the towers and the telecommunications systems that are much more prevalent today. This is a new technology that the small-cell facilities are very small, hence the name, and they're, they're located usually in a canister about the size of a, you know, maybe a popcorn, one of those popcorn tins with all their equipment. So it's, it's a very unique set of data communications, and they're fairly intensely located. So they're, they're generally located about every thousand feet down a street if they were fully utilized. And they're to kind of fill in the gaps of the large systems, large towers, where their topography is a low area or something where they're not getting the, the data and the, and the communications. So just a point of clarification, we're not talking about the huge, or the larger towers and, and those facilities. It's a, it's a-
So these facilities wouldn't necessarily need strobe lights or pulsating red lights for aircraft warnings and other types of, and not generate high noise levels like you might find in high-voltage facilities?
No, these are, these are facilities that, we've actually have a few of these that we have before the, the new law went into effect. We had some last year that we, we negotiated with some wireless companies. And what we did was, they were co-located on a streetlight, city streetlight. They're a facility that's, in some cases, they're either below the streetlight or above the streetlight, but again, they're, they're a fairly small canister, and all their equipment fits in it, and our- in it. And our existing right-of-way permits and ordinances have size requirements and certain coverage requirements, and they're able to meet all those with the current technology, and things continue to get even smaller. So, it's again, it's just a secondary system to the larger one you're more familiar with.
And they'd actually...they'd be less vulnerable to wind damage than the tall towers, as we saw in other parts of the country that were affected by the hurricanes.
Yeah, these systems are, I think the towers or the poles are 50 feet or less.
Right.
And most of them are in that 35 to 40-foot range.
Commissioner Villarreal.
So, with...sorry. With that discussion, how are these support structures powered? Is there a battery or are they connected to the actual electricity system, to the grid?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, I think they are wired directly, so there is usually a meter associated with it that would run up the pole.
So, the question that is then in my mind, back to Commissioner Farr's concerns, is if there was to be...since they are reliant on a direct feed from the electric grid, if there's no power flowing through the grid, would there not necessarily then be some battery or backup power needs for those structures, which would be an additional thing that the words may not allow? And it seemed to me that if we wanted to support the grow-out, the build-out of wireless, having some conditions allowing for backup power for when the power does go out would seem to me to be a condition that would be worthwhile to consider in here. And traditionally, we are thinking of large towers that will have backup power, but if these things are there to fill in, it seems they would also...would be reasonable for them to have at some point a backup power source. I don't know what size it would look like, but there would be something other than just always relying on the grid, because when the grid goes down, which it does occasionally, these things would need to continue to operate.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, I'm not exactly sure of what, how they power them, if there is some backup. I know there's several small units that are within this system. There's an antenna, and there's some other small boxes, communications, and it might be a battery backup as part of that. I don't know. Just not familiar enough with the technology.
Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, staff can go back and confirm if that information would fall underneath the definition of wireless support structure. That would be my estimation, is that if we look at that definition, it probably captures all of that, but we can certainly confirm to make sure there isn't a gap.
So, Julie, just a question. We reviewed, I can't remember when, but we reviewed a tower being added to the high school. Would that have played out any differently with this new policy in place, if this was passed?
Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, no, that would have still utilized the exact same process.
Okay. This is a public hearing. If anyone would like to come forward and speak for or against, please let me know. Seeing none. Any other discussion the commission would like to have? Mr. Chairman? Yes? Like to move the closed public hearing? I have a motion to close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is closed.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to recommend approval to amend City Code Chapter 11 related to the conditional use permits on wireless facilities based on the information included in the staff report dated October 19, 2017, and its attachments.
I have a motion of approval. Do I have a second?
I will second that.
I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, moving on tonight, planner's report.
Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, I just wanted to draw your attention to the fact that on December 12, at their work session, the city council has extended an invitation for the Planning Commission to attend. We will be discussing ASPIRE 2040. At that time, we expect the consultant, Hau Ceele Levine, to be present to provide a draft of the comprehensive plan to the Planning Commission and City Council for discussion and review, and it's anticipated that, you know, following that process, the draft would be moving forward through the public review process. So, I wanted, knowing that the holidays can be a busy time, I wanted to get that out on your calendar, and as it gets closer, I'll remind you as well.
Thank you. All right, moving on. Any members' reports? Continuing business? Any new business? I entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Moved to adjourn the meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting's closed. Thank you.
Another fine meeting.